All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the Public Safety Committee meeting of November the 3rd. We have all committee members present as well as our Fire Chief McCone, our Police Chief Miller, and where's Ms. Rodeo? There she is. Hey. And our Chief Administrator Judge Donna Doreto, as long as well as other city officials, Mr. Duncan. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the reading and approval of the minutes from October the 6th.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from October the 6th say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving right along to the reports from our city officers. We have Chief McCone up first. Our prevention month is over.
Yes, I'll report on that here.
Still going from what I hear.
It was a busy month, so.
Good.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of committee. I said my report is going to be short tonight. As of today, we ran 4,746 calls for the year. And when going into the fire prevention, we had 42 events. We reached over 500 students.
That's awesome. Enjoyed seeing all the pictures along the way.
Pretty busy.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to report this time.
Any questions, comments?
No, for me.
Well, I'll let Chief Milton, never mind.
Okay.
I'll have the forego trophy, I believe. Uh huh. We'll have a buffer, we'll have Judge Doreto in between. Ready? You're second on the docket, I believe, yep.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of committee. I also will be pretty quick tonight, just wanted to quickly go over our budget. So far, our numbers are all looking good. Again, just that detention fee number is a little bit higher. Unfortunately, that's not something that we have too much of control over that goes hand in hand with number of arrests and charges. But we do do what we can to keep that number as good as we can as far as getting to the jail, you know, timely getting discharges over just to mitigate any additional hours that we may not have to to pay for. Our new weekend judge has been adjusting well his first few weeks with us. I've been doing some training and one of my other weekend judges, I've been doing some training with him and he's been doing real good. And we also have one more jury trial this week, mid-December, and we have one more session of preliminary hearings before the end of the year. So we have been working on pretrial conferences with the prosecutors for our jury trials just to make sure we stay on schedule with those cases before the end of the year.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, you'll be back up in a little bit. Thank you. All right, Chief Miller.
Mr. Krailen, Mr. Allgood, the budget's looking good. Over the past two weeks, Axon sent some people down here and we've got all the cameras installed in the vehicles now, so we're up and running with Axon. This past weekend, the Explorers and our community team went to Hollywood Feed, they did the Lindapaw again. They filled up two Ford Explorers, one pickup truck, and then they put as much as they could in the other one because it had a kettle in it. But that was dog food that they're going to be assisting all the local rescue groups and animal shelters with that food. I was pressured into this. We're having the Polar Plunge and I'll have to get you days on it. I've just, my mind's still messed up because I agreed to it.
Yeah.
The Police Chief and Traveler's Rest has, he's wanting to work together with the Polar Plunge and one of the deals is, is if one of his businesses can donate, the first one to donate 2,500, I'll jump in the cold water. And so if one of our businesses donates 2,500, he'll just run water. So I got a list to pick to talk to this week. Does me and Coldwater don't? We don't. Also, the community team, they did an outstanding job this this week with the trunk or treat. They, I mean, there were so many requests for them that we couldn't fill them all as far as going and working the trunk or treats. And then in December, we're going to be having some more like we had last year, candy cane and hot chocolate with a cop. Where that's going to be at the middle schools and elementary schools. And we're looking at pretty soon doing another coffee with a cop. And that'll probably be at the the place over next to Crunch Fitness or it'll be up here at Summer Moon. And I left the trophy upstairs, I was going to take the helmet off.
Ask but not least.
Wear it down here. But yes, we beat the firemen this year in the competitions.
And we'll see what next year brings. Pile up now.
Be us again, so.
Say who cheated this year.
But that's all I've got. Any questions?
I'll just add, I did stop by Lindapaw late Saturday, like between 1:00 and 2:00. I think they were wrapping up at 2:00. And one, an amazing event. I mean, the Explorers were just fantastic and yeah, the trucks were already loaded at that point in time and the trailer was out there, so I don't know if they were able to load anything on the trailer.
Yeah, they went to drop off the stuff, so they're going to have to use a bigger trailer next year because wheels were going flat on it because they had so much.
It was a beautiful day, so that probably brought out more people as well, but.
If I'm not mistaken, the first Explorers filled up right before they were even set up to start.
Oh, yeah.
People had already started coming in and buying it and putting it in the truck before they were ready, so. A good turnout.
Good job. Yeah, yeah, that was nice. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business, so that takes us to new business, which is judicial appointments.
Good evening again. This evening I have before you the reappointments of some certain judicial appointments that we have that are set to expire. So this evening I have before you two current associate trial judges and two administrative judges for new appointment terms. So based on the South Carolina summary court judges' bench book and the South Carolina Code 142515 provides that each municipal judge must be appointed by the council to serve a term set by council of not less than two years, not more than four years. So our appointments are currently expiring. Based on the current volume of arrests upon hearing court sessions, it's believed that the current number and composition of our part-time municipal judges appointed by council will adequately meet the city's operational needs. There is no fiscal impact to the city associated with this request as our budget already includes these positions. So my recommendation is to reappoint Judge McKibben, who's Associate Trial Judge, reappoint Judge Christopher Jackson, Associate Trial Judge, reappoint Curtis Spearman, Administrative Judge, and reappoint Mark Putnam, Administrative Judge, all to two-year terms set to expire December 1st, 2027.
May his pleasure. Yes, sir, Mr. Krailen.
I'd like to make a motion this time to forward a full counsel, the reappointments of the submitted judges here.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Allgood, and I'll just add that the terms will expire December 1st, Any further discussion or questions for Judge Hearing None? All those in favor of forwarding to full counsel, the reappointment of the two associate trial judges and the two administrative judges for two-year appointment terms set to expire December 1st, 2027, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, back around to public comment. Seeing none, committee concerns, signing up for Polar Plunge. Got a few months to practice on that.
When is that again? When is that again?
February 4th, yeah. It was rainy and really, 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 really cold last year, so.
Way to sell it.
Yeah, you can just attend. All right, no other concerns or comments? What do I have on adjournment?
Motion to a.
Got a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned at 6:11. Next up, Mr. Steinbach.
That's me.
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we have you. All right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I will call to order the Business Development Service Committee for November 3rd. All committee members, two committee members are present physically and one virtually, being Mr. Mattney, joining us via technology. So Mr. Duncan, Miller, various and sundry individuals. All right. Next up for us, public comment. None, all right. I got reading and approval of minutes.
Let's make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Like sign, hearing none, they are approved. Reports or communications from city office?
All right, I'll give you a communication tonight.
Right. We'll just declare which one it is.
Just a couple of brief things I'll bring your attention tonight. Continue with the permitting for the soccer stadium. We've now issued a permit this last month for the West Building as well as the concessions and bathrooms building, which is on the east side. So glad to see that project is continuing to move forward. And also, we've had now two months in a row where we've had an unusual high number of business license we've issued, and that continues to be driven by primarily two things. Market vendors for different events that have been going on around the city as well as our stepped-up enforcement on rental properties, seeking them out and making sure they know they get a business license. So that's the report I have for you tonight.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Deerhog. All right, thank you, sir. Unfinished business, there is none. On to new business, Mr. Deerhog.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, I'm parked and I will be inside momentarily.
All right, looking forward to seeing you.
Want to go ahead?
We can wait, we can wait.
Do we need to have, see if Cindy has any funny jokes for us?
No jokes?
I didn't know that she had a lot of jokes. I'm sure she's holding out on us.
No, we, this morning, we were talking about the new SCORF program and the new employee is supposed to start tomorrow and how we were not incorporating an equine element as the City of Casey has done. So then the conversation devolved into what other animals could we incorporate into some sort of opioid program? And no, no monkeys, no donkeys, we were ruling out quite a few.
No monkey business?
No.
Not quite the council member we were anticipating hearing.
There you go. All right. Good to see you, sir. Mr. Deerhog.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members. So this first item is something we brought up last month, having to do with allowing food trucks at particular types of businesses that provide entertainment. And this went to the Planning Commission this past month and comes before you now with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. They voted five to one to recommend approval of this ordinance. So I don't know if you want me to go back through it again or just if you have any questions, but I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Allgood.
Do you have any feedback on the one dissenting vote?
When they took the vote, he didn't give his reason, but during the course of the discussion and dialogue on it, he just cited some concern that food trucks hold an unfair advantage over brick and mortar restaurants, and so was just concerned maybe that we might be hurting the restaurants potentially.
Thank you. Anything else? I did see the comment where you made note about accommodating food truck parks or food truck courts and doing that as a separate ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense at that price. Other than that, I'm good.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we send this ordinance to full counsel.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those like sign, motion carries. Mr. Deerhog, one more for us.
All right, one more. Again, this should be a familiar one, we've talked about this now maybe a couple of times this year, but, and we talked about this last month, this is an ordinance amending, actually, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units, which we currently allow in our small lot districts, and this ordinance works to expand that and allow them into our other residential districts too, but it adds also a lot more standards and regulation for these so that we can be a little more comfortable with how they'll fit in our existing communities. Again, this also went to the Planning Commission this past month and they recommended six oh approval on this ordinance. They, during their discussion, they did also add, recommend adding a provision, which has since been added to the ordinance. That's before you tonight, also setting the maximum number of full bathrooms in an accessory dwelling unit consistent with the number of bedrooms.
Thank you, sir. The, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you. With number, with item 15, which is on page 12, under parking, can you shed some light on the definition here when you're saying in addition to the minimum parking required for principal residence, at least one off-street parking space shall be provided onsite per bedroom in the accessory dwelling unit? What exactly does that mean?
Just means that if you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, you need to make sure you have area for them to park. A lot of times what we're going to see is this will probably just be easily accommodated on the driveway as long as the driveway is long enough. It'll be in some of our newer communities probably where it becomes a little harder because we're seeing a lot of shorter driveways now, so a lot of those are small lot districts to begin with where we haven't ever seen a request for an accessory dwelling unit. So this will be one more thing they would have to try to figure out in some of those cases, and probably what they would do is maybe add on to the driveway or put a pad off to the side of the home or something like that. But mostly what we'll probably see is this accommodated in the driveway. Sometimes what you might see is if they've got room, someone might extend their driveway to go to the side and behind the home, especially if they're doing an accessory dwelling unit in the backyard. They'll oftentimes like to put some parking up behind the home, close to where the accessory dwelling unit is, out of convenience, but, so we'll probably see that as well from time to time.
And, and there is a, because I don't see it here, but when we say parking pads, is that defined in any way?
Um, that would be like if you are paving a pad in kind of separate, it's not really the driveway, but something separate off of the driveway. What we'd want to, what we don't want to see there is that put right in front of the house.
My, my concern is, is that there, there may not be a, there's not a true definition of what a parking pad is, then someone can say, well, those four cones that I put out on my drive, on my front lawn, that's my parking pad.
Uh huh.
You know, that's, that's what I'm defining it as. Or do we need to specify that it needs to be paved or does gravel work? I mean, I don't know if we need to get that technical, but going back to your other comment about driveway design, we are seeing that those driveways are shorter now, and so they're more likely going to have to find a way to build a pad to the side because they probably can't put it in the driveway. So that would be my only concern. I don't, I'm not going to say we need to hold it up in committee, but something to think about going into if this goes to full counsel, to just kind of defining what, what is a parking pad so that everybody knows.
Got it noted and certainly glad to maybe tweak it a little bit before it comes to first reading perhaps.
Yeah, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chairman, just as a clarification for Mr. Allgood.
Thank you.
In section, in that specific seg, section on 15 parking, could we just define the parking pad as far as a size? So a lot of times what we look at is, is you can allocate a certain amount of space on a driveway or inside a garage for parking, and I guess the measurement would be defined, or you could add a definition of measurement in order to help us look at this ordinance by way of calculating the number of parking spaces allocable, that you can allocate towards from a driveway's perspective. So if we say it's, you know, six feet by, I don't know, nine feet, 10 feet, what would?
Yeah, boy, that's a tiny, tiny car.
Sure. I drive a tiny, tiny car, so.
The standard parking size is usually about nine feet wide by about 18 feet long, but that's in a commercial setting. We could go in and narrow that down perhaps for a residential setting like this, but what we'd also probably look to do to Mr. Allgood's point is identify appropriate surfaces that can be used for parking and, and what would constitute then an appropriate or acceptable parking pad.
Yeah. And I really kind of go back to our neighbors in Planters Row where we've heard about the parking along the sides of the road. Now, of course, in that case, they have an HOA, so they have rules and regulations on what they can and cannot do, but for any neighborhoods that we do have that have these short driveways and therefore what is the parking pad? What is that definition? So, yeah, I appreciate just looking at that. But that's all the questions that I have.
All right. What do I hear from the committee on?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we send over this proposed text amendment to full counsel.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, hearing none, we'll forward it on to counsel. Public comment number two. Here, nobody online. Committee concerns. Personally, would just like to point out that me and Mr. Allgood did not intend to match tonight. It's completely coincidence, and we will text each other before meetings from now on. What do I hear in adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned at 6:25.
3rd, 2025 at approximately 6:28 PM. That's the records reflect that all members of the council are present in chamber. And a couple of citizens, appreciate y'all being here tonight, and my staff, administrator Mr. Duncan, Ms. Miller, Mr. Saxton, even Davis stuck around here for a little while. Good, thank you, sir. Got it added up, it's November, the Pledge of Allegiance would be Mr. Allgood tonight, so I defer to you, please.
All right, we'll start with the invocation. If you so choose, you may pray with us. We stand before you, Holy Spirit, as we gather together in your name, with you alone to guide us, make yourself at home in our hearts, inside and outside these chambers, teach us the way we must go and how we are to pursue it. Tomorrow's election day, we pray for all our neighbors, young and old, those who vote and those who volunteer at the polls, and in the end, may we find peace in the fact that our hope rests not in any one candidate, one election, or one council, but the enduring call to love, serve, and build our city. In your name we pray, amen. You're able, you may stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Under new business, I'd like to submit to the council a motion to suspend our rules and allow our agenda items B, C, and D to be considered prior to item A, which would move to the N or right above council request. It is a motion to suspend rules and it would have to be a super majority, which would be at least five, so it's the pleasure of council.
So moved.
Okay, motion to suspend rules. Mr. Krailen, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. We will move then to item B, B and C, that's our, you go to be consideration, economic development. Mr. Matty, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. Move we enter executive session and consider economic development matters related to Malden Stadium as allowed under 30-4-70A2, and for personnel matters related to city administrators' annual review is allowed under 30-4-70A1.
Okay, motion, Mr. Grant, is there a second?
Second.
Second. I'll go with Mr. Reynolds since he's the closest. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for the two items for executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, at approximately 6:31, we'll move into executive session upstairs. Those in the audience will be back shortly. Opposing the audience will be back shortly. That's.
All right, returning to council chambers from executive session approximately 7:45. Mr. Mattney, you'd like to report out for us?
Thank you, Mayor. No decisions were made and no votes were taken.
This is no votes. Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Uh, next item before us is possible action on items discussed in executive session. Anyone? Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. A move that we authorize the city administrator to execute change order number three on the stadium.
Change. Motion of authorized the city administrator for change order three on the stadium issue for Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Good, Mayor.
Right wing. We'll go with Reynolds since he's a clear beginning, right? Any discussion? Hear none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, o supposed like sign here and then the motion carries six oh. Let the records reflect that Mr. Krailin had to leave us early due to a family issue he had to take care of, but he's not with us on that, so that's why the vote was six oh. Anything else? All right, hearing none, we now will go back with next item on the agenda. We have a discussion on the city rebranding initiative. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a kind of a quick update and then I think I'll turn it over to back to y'all. But um, as you know, that we've been working for many months now on the city rebranding initiative and we actually had narrowed it down to just kind of two options. Uh, we think we've got a pretty good um calibration on on kind of what we want to stand with our logo. Uh, but it's a matter of, okay, what type of topography font style do we want? And so what staff has provided is two options. Uh, we'll call one uh, you know, the thin leg M and the other one the more curved M. And so what we were hoping for tonight was a discussion and um, if council's ready to to hopefully focus in on first, one of the two options, which which side do we like, left side or the right side? And then the second question I hope that we can answer is as far as our day in and day out usage from a color palette perspective, uh, which of the wonderful versions and iterations, uh, which we try to, you know, balance everyone's uh, you know, desires to see different things with that, but which one really stands out and and sets the tone for what we're looking for for the city? Um, and in addition to kind of providing the two primary, uh, the two versions and then we had an equal uh, match of of color palette is one of the options that was given to us by the designers this last time was to split the M, uh, instead of the M being a solid color, uh, within the the symbol, the they split it and we we thought about that and decided that that's kind of a neat approach and then asked for some color variations of splitting that M because it it focuses your eye in on different aspects of that 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 logo. So we provided those two. We know that just added a whole bunch more colors for consideration and and the ways to look at it. Um, but really wanted to get council's feedback and see if there's a direction. Uh, the first question would be which of the two, left or the right, are we passionate about and ready to move forward with? And then after that, figuring out what color arrangement works for our our day in and day out. And what's exciting about this logo is that it is very versatile for us. So not only can we use it in a black and white format, but we can also use it in our traditional color palette and then even create seasonal or holiday versions. Um, that could be quite interesting given whatever medium we're using to put it into. Um, so with that said, um, I'll turn it back over to you, Sarah, and we'll kind of figure out where to go with that.
So uh, weighing on this, I would prefer that you talk about column A or column B and not let's don't go left or right. Too much, too much connotation right now publicly on left and right. So how about column A or column B? There seems to be a passion for column A. There you go, Ms. King. Yeah, that's fair. Yeah.
Sam.
There you go.
Um, and this may not be a popular thing that I'm getting ready to say, but sorry. I'm gonna be honest. So if y'all recall back a couple of months ago when Seth gave us just the black and white, just the piece of paper that had in the black ink, like the three different fonts and the solid black logo. Um, I took that piece of paper and folded it in half because that's all you needed because it was all at the top. And I asked a random group, probably a total of thirty people, thirty-five maybe, a hundred percent of the people I asked went with column B, one hundred percent. a hundred percent of the people I asked went with column B, one hundred percent. And column A was their least favorite. And the age group was anywhere from twenty-five to sixty years old. So take that for what it is. Um, because I'm like, what am I missing? I'm the only one that, well, might be the only one who liked the skinny M. So, um, anyway, and one of the folks that was in a group that I, um, unofficially polled was actually in marketing and gave me a lot of feedback as to why he thought column B was just the better eye catcher. So take that for what it's worth. I don't know. I don't know if any other staff members have been asked. We keep saying it's up to the seven on this council and I kind of disagree with that as well. Because we have more stakeholders in the city than the seven of us sitting up here. But, um, anyway. I'm a skinny M. I mean, a skinny one side. Once we get past that, we can talk colors. I have opinions on that, too.
Of course, what she didn't tell you is that the nineteen-year-olds and the sixty-one-year-olds really loved column A better.
Oh. Well, I said approximately, but the fact that a hundred percent of all of those folks that I asked independently, not with each, you know, not with like five people together, all picked column B.
There, there is from the staff perspective, and I'm summarizing, so I'm not trying to turn my back to you. I'm just trying trying to be here for the, it's easier at a round table, right? Um, you know, column B is a little bit closer or similar to what we have now. And it's a really good mark. Uh, it's it's very, you know, fresh and and, you know, timely. It it creates a nice bridge between where we are and where we want to be because it's not exactly the same. But it's it's familiar. And I think that there's a lot of, um, there are a lot of folks that like that, like the mark. I think, uh, you know, i- if it's really good with kind of a transition, if you think brands and logos evolve over time, I think it's good. It's a lot better than the Jaguar rebrand. So I'll tell you that. For all those car buffs. So we don't, we're not sharing the screen live right now.
This makes it much easier to look at, I think.
There we go. Okay, I figured it, yeah. And we're not sharing the screen live. Just to create some still mystery about and reveal when it comes time.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I I have grown to to say I'm I'm fine with column B. If we want to go that direction, if we stay with column A, I would be fine with that direction, too, at this point, when it comes to these two. I don't really have a strong opinion either way at this point. Both of them are strong, but it didn't sound like I was bashing one or the other. But I would just say that I think they're both strong.
So there's, there's popular slang that the kids are using that I'm going to immediately make unpopular? Six, seven?
Six, seven, six, seven.
Is it a word or a number?
I hope that gets on Fox News.
My, my personal thought is I would like to see this council come to a consensus and recommend to our administrator and our staff to move forward. Get her done. This is not earth-shattering. Five years from now, you'll probably have another group up here and they can change it if they want to. I just pick five years as a number, not that I'm projecting anybody. Yeah, I, you know, I'm traditional, so I like the lettering and the little wiggy Ms. At the bottom is the tails off. Didn't bother me one night. But skinny M was, you know, I gave up on being skinny a long time ago, but it is what it is.
Unless there's an ejection, I'm going to go and say let's go with column B. I thought we were voting, but.
Switch up on it. Colors?
All right, good.
Another was make sure that a lot of the color choices, palettes, ideas, options were represented. So we did that, and I think we covered everyone's bases. Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, they threw this option on, we noticed on the third one, where they changed the M's a little bit. They split the colors and it draws your eyes differently to the logo. And when they did that, it kind of made us think, huh, what other combinations would look interesting like that? So third page ended up becoming, um, a a whole slew of of new kind of color schemes, but with the M split colored versus. Yeah, so and.
I thought now that we, um, go with the split M.
So, but we tried to cover.
You just want everything you want.
I do.
So we tried to cover all of our palette options. Yes, sir.
Right there. Number eight, please.
Number eight, please.
Okay. So I know this is where, you know, it it comes across as as being, um, nitpicky, if you will. This is the only option where we have like three colors and not four. And I think the fact that we have it this way where you've got the, the, the two here is the primary logo itself, and then the blue is the Malden. I'm not saying that we have to go with this absolute color scheme, but the fact that it's three instead of four, to me, just makes it much more simpler and easier on the eye.
I'm with Mr. Allgood.
I'll add to that. When I was doing my research on this, yes, I did research color palettes. Um, that was what I saw that typically you would only use three colors. Um, but it said if you wanted to use four, to look at the opposite of the color wheel. So that's what I asked Mr. Duncan. I said, can you give us like the blues and then across from the color wheel of the blues are your kind of red family? So, um, I kind of like some of those split M's and that, um, and those blues and. I like the, I like number.
That's good.
Like number one, like page, the last page, all the one at the top. Let's see, or the second.
Last page is which is start, I got one C, two C.
Option one hundred and one.
Yeah.
The third page.
It's, it's got to be the second one on the third page.
The number bottom, if you can take the magnifying glass and read it.
Yeah, starting there. Now, those aren't split that, yeah, they are.
They are split.
Different on here.
Yeah, they don't look.
Scroll down to the whole blue one. Then the one under that, please. Wow, they look so different on here.
We'll go with green colors other than.
The screens are going to be a lot easier.
Yeah.
Frank, who had eight, I liked eight. But Cheryl's wanting to see another.
Hey, look at that one. That's a good one.
It's on the very first page. Column on the right, bottom, before it splits, bottom.
Eight A.
Well, it's just eight on this page.
On pedal first page.
Yep, first page, bottom.
Is that the one that I I had asked for? Okay, perfect.
When it shows the white and then the blues, there are different pairs that's just. The eight, where you got the.
Regular eight was back to the one that we were just looking at before.
Right there.
Right there.
So you got white and then on the right, blue. The white, yep, going down a little bit more, a bit more, right there.
Giddy up.
You got the white with Malden in South Carolina, red, then to the right of that, you got the blue with Malden and South Carolina both in white. Is there a difference between the two or is?
It's just the fact that you got a, yeah, it's an invert because you got like a negative because you're on a dark background.
You can use either one. If you have a dark background, use the white background. If it's a light background, you can use the dark background of logos.
I like the Malden and South Carolina both in white, the same color that shows good on the blue. I'll call it blue. It may be fancy.
Sometimes we do use.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Hey, do you like the blues on top, the dubbing?
Well, here, here's the thing. Um, again, we could, we could probably drop a color and we could be all blue. But I I I'm reminded about conversations we've had previously, which is, do we look too much like our neighbors to the south? Or this gentleman here saying we need to have orange if it's going to be Malden? The this, this, this color scheme of the, the, the orange and this version of red, I'm, I'm bad with calling it, whether it's mauve or magenta or whatever it is. It's certainly something that's going to stand out and differentiate the city compared to anything else you're going to see between Greenville and Greer, Simpsonville, et cetera. Um, so that's why I, and plus it's only three colors. So that's why I immediately gravitated toward that. If we went up to to number seven, because we say, you know, we feel like blue is is more in tune with with who we are and what we, what we want to stand for, I'm totally for it. We can go with that. But I'm just saying this would definitely differentiate ourselves if we went more in that orange and red family. And typically with with orange, you're, it's, it it has more of a sense of vibrancy and energy. Where, you know, compared to a cooler color like a blue or a green. But I think, you know, particularly the the greens, and I love the greens, we're starting to see a lot of it.
Saying that's the way I feel. Has nothing to do with what team I pull for, but everything in Malden is orange. So I would personally would like for our logo to be more unique and different and have different colors than an orange. But the mayor would say I'm just one person.
We scroll down to the last one on this page.
That one, yeah. Red plays off of the orange, so it's not like orange that jumped out.
I like it. I don't like those two colors together. Not bad.
It wasn't me, but I do like that one. It's nostalgic.
I did the blues and the opposite. It's actually not bad. Not bad. Really didn't notice it before, but.
And it's still different from everybody else.
That, that it would be. I, I would still love to drop a color.
So the problem is, is on the dark, on the inverted dark logo, you lose one of the M's. So I would say maybe even you drop that darker color. I don't know.
So if you did that, that the background, that mid-tone green, I'm going to call it. And so you had two, two yellow M's and two of that tealish color green M. Right. And then you could still utilize, um, you know. Yeah. You can still use that, that dark blue for the actual word of Malden.
One, five. Colors? Please. Mine. Nope.
So let me, let me just ask the question then. When it comes to like the, the magenta color, whatever we're calling it, I keep looking at you, Lauren, like, you know. Does everyone hate that? Does anyone like it? I'm getting a yes, the gentleman to my right. It's not like that color. Yeah, so now we got two. Got it.
Some of staff like the magenta kind of color in general with the blues, maybe.
Because again, if we looked at, if we looked at all the examples that we are given, when it comes to the word Malden, it's blue or magenta is the only two options that we have. I'm not saying that we have to go down a whole nother path there, but, um, if if clearly the magenta is not the color that that we want, that certainly helps us narrow things down.
So if we were taking making growth, we go back to that, what'd you call it, magenta?
Yes.
And you're going to change the colors of the M's to gold and teal? Would you do that on the magenta background?
No.
Leave the color.
Yeah, in a, in a nutshell, it's, it's more along the lines of if you just stick to the, looking at the left-hand side, the, the right-hand side is all just about reverse color.
I just am not a fan of the split M, though. I think it, I think it forces you to really work to see where the M is.
Look at A B. For some reason I had that written down. It's a split M. What colors it is? Just kind of think that looks cool.
They only went with three colors in the invert.
Yeah.
They're not even the same logo.
It's not even the same colors.
Think you go back to that. First one on the bottom.
I mean.
Last one on the first page and you drop the color.
Let me make another, um, comment, question to the group. Our colleagues to the far left, one has said that they like the split. The other one says they do not like the split. What does the other say? In terms of an M?
I do think that splits. It's more. Split hairs over there.
Or M's.
Mildly lean.
Mayor, do you have a preference?
I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on that. I did think it was kind of cool. It's a good idea.
Ten. Can you go to two B, please? Okay, so the only reason why I bring this one back up, because it, it, it doesn't look the same here as it does here. But if you were to take the split M and again, you, you narrowed it down to just two colors. Okay, so you got your, I'm, right now we're using magenta. We obviously don't like magenta, but if you had the magenta and it was opposite just one of those two colors. When I look at it on my paper, it clearly becomes more defined as those directional signals because it's only the two colors. So when we were starting to look at this from the standpoint of, yes, we know that it's four M's that are going around, but you can also infer a compass design or you can infer, um, more of that star shape. It becomes more evident with the split M because you have that distinct. If you look just at the magenta right there, you can see that. And then if the, the other ones were the same color, then you would see it there as well. Well, what I would, what I would suggest, based on what you've heard so far tonight, is there seems to be more of a heavy leaning toward this gold or yellow color. So if you were to explore using that yellow gold color along with and narrow it down to just two, so it's that gold opposite something else. And nine chances out of ten, it's gonna be a version of either this, one of these three here. So then you could explore, what does that look like with being a full M, yellow, yellow, blue, blue? Or splitting it up? What does that look like? Compare the two and you probably have an answer. But that's me. What else can chime in? Am I, am I hitting? What the consensus is sort of, maybe, kinda?
I'm not gonna twelve angry men this thing and be a holdout, so we, let's move.
I think blue is You go ahead.
We wanna give another four or five. Bring Jason back into the loop at the next meeting. We've now got it to one column. Maybe we shrink that a little more.
That's what I mean. Eliminate a bunch of the ones we
It, it sounds like we're eliminating the red family completely, correct?
The one that's on the screen right now, I understood you, Frank, you were saying gold on the top, gold straight down to the bottom, and then let's use the light. What you call that? Light, light blue on the right and the left.
I, I would probably use the darker, the, that one there that he keeps scrolling, that one right there. Yeah, I would probably use that opposite that gold. Because it, it, the, the lighter blue is probably gonna get a little too faint.
Saying use the golden top and bottom.
Correct. And then you're gonna
Left and right would be the blue that's on the bottom right now.
Correct. And then you could take that same one, same, same thing that you, we just said, and you could try and see what it looks like with the split M. And then you've got, those are your two options that you could choose from once you see it. Unless there's other color combinations that people want to see.
That's where I get all sprinkled there.
There's not.
Not, not
Like the one above it?
Like this one right here where you have the light on one side of the M and the dark, the other side of the M. So if you were to take like where we see the
With the colors on the
Yes. Valentine's Day, Christmas, yeah, you can have all kinds of fun with it. But I do think it's important to find the base. Yeah.
Everybody couldn't live without.
You got your font.
Going to that color scheme together, Seth can get it back.
Yeah, one with split M's with just blues. Before we leave. Yeah, I don't like Yeah, it's just, you know, it looks good on this paper, but then when you said what was the one below it? But that has some magenta. Some with some gold split.
So you just said called that gold and another person called it orange.
Not the gold as the other gold.
Not as gold as the other gold.
Like
That's like if Tennessee were to call that orange. It's not really.
Yeah, it's, it's pushing up against.
Yeah.
Great. The, the options with the gold on that, based on that one. Yeah, if we look at it, we got
Yeah, I mean, if you were to go back again, I'm not, I'm not want to get into a whole bunch of different yellows and golds, but if you go back to that other design that they had given us with the heart shaped. Okay, one of the ones that they had on the banner was a yellow M, which kind of looked like McDonald's. But the color was good.
Nice poppy.
Yeah, it was a poppy. Poppy yellow. That's a technical term.
This, this, I think all screens are representing these colors better than the TV. And I think the print would come out clearer once we We're using
You want to see examples of what we decided or not decided? Seem to be leaning toward one with split, one without
Yeah.
Those two options.
Y'all think we can get that by the end of the week from them?
Gregory looks thrilled. Again, we honestly have to go magenta, but maybe there's a red. There's another, another version of red that would work.
It's like a wash down.
And it's, it's very minute. Do you call that? I, I'm all for it. I'm still for it, but I'm a minority on this.
I like a nice Cabernet.
No, I, I, that's why I was asking the question of the group, was to get a gauge for the magenta, because that's obviously the one that I liked. If we go back to it, number eight was the overall one that I liked. One, two, three, four, five, six, number eight. The first one we led with. That one. But see, to me, again, as was just pointed out with Simpsonville, you don't find this anywhere. You're not gonna find that.
That's right.
I know.
All y'all continue to do. And our staff too. They're doing a great job.
Good to move on?
Yes, sir.
We got what we need?
Uh, we're at council request. Hear none?
Hold on, ma'am.
Whoop, sorry, Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just very quickly, um, Bonnie and Don Childs used to live over in Forester Woods and their kids, Amy, Matt and Russ, um, went to Malden High School. Uh, and Bonnie was a woman who loved her Lord with all her heart. And she also put up with all of the silliness that we would run through her house um, as teenagers. And, um, she passed away last Thursday um, after a very brief illness and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend her homegoing before coming here tonight. And I just want to extend, uh, my sympathies and condolences to the Childs family and, uh, rest easy, Bonnie.
Thank you, sir. Glad to say the, uh, those of us who grew up here also know the Sidney Garrett family. And their youngest son, Dicky, passed away at ten thirty last night, so. Yo Chris, that's a sixty-seven. The Dianes, class Bud, I just turned that out before I came out here tonight, so don't have any other detail in this. All I can say is it's been a tough month and a half for people my age. Alright, uh, anything else? Hear none? What I hear on German?
Don't move.
Mr. Beanback? Second?
Second.
Mattney? We are adjourned at eight twenty-four.